Good evening and welcome to the July 26, 2016 School Committee Meeting. We're happy to have you join us. This meeting is being recorded by East Hampton Media. East Hampton Media, Channels 191, 192, and 193 is looking for volunteers. If anyone is interested in helping to tape city government meetings, please contact Kathy Lynch at (413) 203-1360. Superintendent Follinsby, do you have some announcements?
I do. The next regular school committee meetings are August 9th, September 13th, and 27th, 2016. The first day of school for students is Thursday, September 1st, 2016. Kindergarten screenings will take place on Thursday and Friday, September 1st and 2nd. There is no school on Monday, September 5th due to Labor Day. Kindergarten visiting day is Tuesday, September 6th. Kindergarten students' first day is Wednesday, September 7th. And there is no school on Thursday, September 8th due to state primary election and Teacher Professional Development Day.
Okay, do we have any correspondence?
I don't think we do. I know we have a gift.
We had a gift. How about gifts?
I would ask the committee to please vote to accept with gratitude and appreciation a gift from District Attorney David Sullivan for the recent donation to the East Hampton Healthy Youth Coalition in the amount of $419.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much, District Attorney David Sullivan. Okay, at this time, we have the public speak portion of our meeting where we invite anyone who would like to come speak to us about any topic to do so. And it doesn't look as though anyone's here to do that. So we will move on to our subcommittee reports. And I think I'm safe in saying that the finance subcommittee has not met since we met last, and I don't know for sure about the policy review committee.
We also have not met.
But we do have a second. Am I mistaken about the second reading? Don't we have to read? I apologize.
Oh, I got, yeah.
Yep, we have to read the revision to the...
Let me get it off.
The state has mandated, it's something that we're already doing. It's involved...
I feel like I've read this like 10 times.
Right, and we have to have read it twice before school starts. Right, we read it the first time, the last time we met.
Did you have the last meeting?
I thought that was the first reading. I apologize.
I think we did two.
Do we do two? Okay, I just know that we have to have it ready to go before...
Right, September.
The 1st of September when classes start.
Yes.
So, well, that's on the file. Okay, can we return to this?
Yeah, I'm...
I'll look and try to find.
I'm looking as well.
My belief is that that, and I can go back and look at the minutes, is that we needed to get it read and then we vote at the next meeting. First reading, second reading, vote, correct?
Second reading is a vote.
Second reading and vote, then maybe we're all set.
I think we're all set because I've definitely read it twice.
I'm new, I've never been on the school committee before.
So Sarah's remembering that she read it twice.
Yeah, Peter's new here, so we'll forget.
As long as we're safe, I'm happy to be embarrassed and wrong.
Okay.
I would, um, yeah, I agree with you on that. I'd rather us be safe.
Okay.
But I don't, I don't have the minutes either.
Sue's looking it up.
Okay.
So we're saying that we need a second reading, but on the second reading, we can vote?
We think we've done both readings.
Yeah, I thought we had, I thought we had done the first, so.
And approved it, but Sue's checking to be sure.
Well, here, duh. I'm staring at the minutes, right?
Yeah, I don't have the minutes. Do you have my minutes?
I've got the minutes saying that we submitted the minutes of our June 20th meeting. Oh, I do apologize, folks. Let me see if I can back up here.
Are they on the website?
Policy Subcommittee...
I don't know.
Hang on. What do you mean I'm not connected? Oh, yeah. I'm not connected at the moment?
Hold on, I'm looking for it as well.
Stay in school.
Yep. Okay, I'm connected. Sorry, go ahead.
I was gonna say, at the last meeting, we did not, um, vote on the policy update.
Okay. But we read it.
We read it. I believe we did the first reading. Um, okay, 7:26, 6:28, School Committee, Policy Subcommittee Agenda, hang on.
Policy Subcommittee met immediately following the regular meeting, is that correct?
Correct.
Yes, open.
I'm not sure if you actually met this.
We did, we, we had our, at the meeting that we had on the 28th of June, we did our, we began the review of the transportation policy. We looked at the updated prohibition on alcohol, tobacco, and drug use that now includes the prohibitions on e-cigarettes.
Mm-hmm.
And the teaching about alcohol, tobacco, and drugs, right? That's the new policy.
Right.
So that was on June 28th, immediately following that regular session. So my sense is that the policy needs to be, I think we need to do a reading tonight. And I'm hustling to...
Huh? I didn't send them to you, I apologize. I just found them.
Okay.
No, I didn't.
So if we go...
That's the reason why it's not on the agenda.
Okay.
Okay.
Now, is it a problem that it's not on the agenda for us to...
Yeah, you can't.
...do anything about that?
All right, so then let's just make sure that for our August meeting...
The minutes of the 6:28 Policy Subcommittee meeting will be submitted.
Right.
And then I will have, that will tell me what reading needs to be done and changes because I don't have that information.
Okay, perfect. Now, I'm just trying to, I'm just trying to pull up to be sure that we've got the... I had a paper copy of it, and of course, that's not what I grabbed and bring, but again, I apologize, folks, everyone who's waiting here. Okay, I'm gonna have to do some more research than I can do right now to make sure that that can, that, so we can determine whether we did, the most we could have done then for is one reading. We could not have read it twice.
Of the substance abuse, but the other one...
Substance abuse, okay.
Right.
Right?
I was thinking the other policy.
The other policy, I think we did, the emergency, uh...
Okay.
Protocols.
Sorry.
So we'll put it on the next meeting's agenda? Okay. Okay, moving on. Cynthia, is there an update on the Collaborative for Educational Services?
Uh, we didn't meet in August, we're not meeting in August, but we are meeting in September, and we've begun just very beginnings of an initiative to publicize as a whole collaborative entity the great things that public schools do as kind of an answer to charter and the whole struggle between charter and public schools. So we're really working on how we're gonna present that information, what we're going to gather, but the idea is that public schools do a lot of great things. We have a lot of great kids graduating and going on successfully to many different colleges and many different fields, so we should be figuring out a way to, as a group, you know, send out that message. So we're gonna work on that, and that'll be in September and October. That'll be off and running.
Sounds good.
It's exciting.
Sounds good. Okay. Superintendent Follinsby, do you want to move on to your report?
Certainly. So we're going to start with a school lunch price review and increase for you all to consider, and Dale Doran, our Director of Business Services, is going to give you a little feedback about that, a little introduction, sure, and then you can see if you have any questions.
So I am coming forward after collaborating with our food service company, Chartwell's, having looked at this issue, and we are recommending an increase in the elementary and middle school lunch prices for next year and the adult price. So the exception, the one that would remain the same as the high school. The elementary, we're recommending a 15 cent increase from 200, from $2.50 to $2.65. The middle school lunches, we're recommending an increase of a dime, 10 cents, from $2.75 to $2.85. The high school would remain the same at $3. And then the adult lunch is currently $3.25, and we're recommending an increase of a quarter to $3.50. The reason that we feel it's necessary to make this recommendation is that the National School Lunch Program has guidelines by which you have to analyze on an annual basis what you're collecting in terms of fees for the lunches versus what it's costing you to prepare that lunch, and that's out of whack. The Department of Education said we had to make an increase that would result in additional sales revenue. So once we knew that, we took a good look at all of the lunch prices in the area, and you have a summary of that in your packet this evening, and then tried to make increases that would have us in compliance with the Department of Ed guidelines, but would also keep us in step with what lunches are costing in our local market. So the reason for the increase, at the, the greater increase with the adult lunches is that they cost more to prepare, the serving sizes are different and so forth, than some of the children's lunches depending on level. And the other thing that's important to remember about the adult lunches is that there is no reimbursement from the federal program for adult meals. We get them for, for all the children's meals, but none of the adults. So there's no offsetting subsidy. I'm happy to answer any questions, if there are questions.
How does this affect the students receiving reduced price for lunch?
It does, and students that qualify for free and reduced, those, those rates are set by the federal program. It's a 40 cent lunch for children who qualify for reduced.
And that doesn't change.
And that does not change, and of course, free is free.
Free.
So it's been 40 percent, I mean 40 cents for a very long time, all my time in public education, it's been at 40 cents for reduced. That, I don't know if they ever raise it, they've never done it in my time in education.
When I looked at these numbers, I, I kinda wondered whether we should just increase the elementary to $2.75 and the middle to $3 rather than have it be that kind of in-between stage between those more rounded types of numbers, and maybe then not be, you know, thinking if we took a little bigger leap now, then maybe we wouldn't be asking for more very, as soon thereafter, and maybe it would make more sense.
That's certainly an option to do that.
For having everyone deal with rounder numbers. It's just a thought that came to mind.
It's good math practice.
Yeah.
How often does that, does it change?
It, it has been, this is the first change in three school years.
Okay.
So you're saying raise the elementary school prices?
So I just didn't know, rather than go to $2.65, if we just went to an even $2.75? That kinda makes it easier for everyone and...
So you're thinking $2.75, 3, and 3?
3 and 3, okay.
What impact do you anticipate this will have in participation?
It's, it's, it's hard to say.
Right.
It really is hard to say.
Because the last price change occurred four years ago.
Yep.
And I don't, I don't remember what the impact was.
I don't think there was a negative impact because we certainly would have heard about that, but we're always trying to increase the number of students who take the school lunch.
I like the, the three different amounts simply because I know that those portions are so different, and the elementary school portion is very, very different from a high school portion, so I like the fact that they're, you know, incremental. What was the thinking in...
One was the idea of incremental. You have an incremental price structure currently, and it maintains it, and the other was to come up with an increase that would bring us into compliance, but also kept the increase as modest as possible, given you want to make it available to as many students, make it possible, I guess, to as many students. But as Deb suggests, it, we might find ourselves in this position a year from now or two years from now, making the smaller, it's sort of a philosophical thing, do you wanna take small steps up or less frequent, bigger steps? And we are on the side of smaller incremental steps, given that that was the current structure.
Well, my personal favorite would be to take those small incremental steps and only, you know, keep raising as we go, just because you don't wanna price yourself out of people being able to really afford that lunch, you know, and if gradually you have to go up every year to get to that point, I don't know, that makes sense to me. I like what you did here, and I'm looking at those prices, and, you know, we're kind of right in the middle of what everybody else is doing.
I also, I didn't say, but should say, that relied pretty heavily on Chartwell's input in regards to this, given their experience across the region.
Yeah.
And this was the scenario that they sort of put forth favored.
Is, is, are these the rates that are, that they go with with most all of their schools?
I think the only other school of these that they have is Granby.
Right.
I think Granby is the only other count that they have locally.
I see.
If I'm not mistaken.
I believe you're right.
I was wondering about Southampton and West Hampton, too, what their rates are, just because I think we're so often compared as a district to those schools, so I was kinda curious. I'm sure this list is intended to reflect in some level district size, comparable size, and probably economic.
And, and my guess is, actually, Andrew Stratton, the Food Service Director, did this, having done surveys like this before, some responded, some don't, too. You put it out typically to everybody and then try to get a critical mass back.
Right.
So that might be a piece of this, too. I don't know.
Yeah. Well, I'm happy to go with it as it's proposed, I just wanted to throw out for consideration and discussion the possibility of making them rounder numbers.
What's the current budget amount for our contract with Chartwell's?
I'd have to look, I don't know it off the top of my head.
Because that, I mean, we, for a number of years on the school committee, had vigorous annual discussions about it, and we haven't recently, so clearly, it seems to me that on the Chartwell side, they seem content with the, with the structure, and I'm wondering what our subsidy in this year's budget was, I'm not recalling, I assume there was an increase there, but I don't know what, what the percentage was. It's not, it's not directly relevant to this, I don't wanna hold this up, but I, it reminded me.
Our subsidy of the program? The district subsidy of the program?
Yes, a different term, IU subsidy. Or investment.
Investment.
Are you talking, it's the question you're asking, how much did the district need to pay this year to run the food service program?
Relative to last year, how much has that changed?
Relative to it paying for itself, is that what you're asking?
Right.
$32,000.
Right, and last year, the amount was?
It was almost double that.
Last year, we had to pay almost double?
Yep.
Wow.
There's an improvement in the revenue loss this year by about half, is what I've been told.
And how is that, how are we making that difference up? How is that happening? Why would it be so much better this year?
Pardon me?
Why would it be so much better this year?
I, I think it's a couple of, I think it's a couple of different things. Participation was improved, more children are participating in the program, and the other thing is we made a very concerted effort, you probably remember a few months ago now, we looked at the collection policy, we put a really concerted effort into collecting on overdue accounts, and I think that it's a combination of those two things.
Right.
One of the things Andrew did, I, you might have heard about it here or read about it, was he did this whole promotional thing with basketball signed by the high school teams that were, were given away in the elementary schools to kids who participated in the program during basketball season. He did a lot of creative thinking about how to generate interest in eating school meals, and, and that resulted in, in more kids participating.
That one was particularly popular because our basketball team had done so well.
Yeah, they had a good season. Yep. The other thing I'd say about the, taking the bigger leap, we used to, I can remember earlier on in my tenure as a school administrator, wanted to do that when we were making a lot of change, but most, most people pay by check now, and it's put on account, so that's, that's less of an issue. You'd want round numbers, like...
Like so that they weren't just getting in?
75 cents or 50 cents for making change.
Right.
But that really isn't that big of a deal anymore.
Not so much, yeah, I was thinking from a parent's perspective and handing the kid money all the time. It's easier than, oh my gosh, what is it, 60 what cents? Like, it's just easier, here's three quarters.
You don't end up with a bunch of nickels in the wallet.
Yeah, yeah, it's just sometimes easier for everybody.
But there's very little cash transaction comparatively anymore with, with school meals.
Okay, that helps. Okay, well, in light of the fact, too, that we're closing that gap so much in terms of the district's investment in the program, I'm comfortable going with it as proposed?
And if participation is moving in the right direction, I think that Cynthia's question about being sure to move at what is required, but would do the minimum amount to discourage people makes, makes sense to me, too.
Okay, any other discussion, would you like to vote?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Does anyone want to?
Make a motion that, that proposed changes in the school lunch prices for people, for students, at the elementary school, go from $2.50 to $2.65, at middle, from $2.75 to $2.85, that the high school would remain the same at $3, and that the adult lunch price would change from $3.25 to $3.50 for the upcoming school year.
Second?
There's a motion, and it's been seconded, to approve the lunch, the proposed new lunch prices as detailed on this sheet of paper, and Peter just explained. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you very much. Okay.
Next?
Next, we have an update.
And I'm going to ask if Dale will stay for this as well, because she might have other information that she wants to add, or when there are questions that, that she might have answers to that I don't have. So I'm going to do an update on the Massachusetts School Building Authority project that we're involved in, and I'm gonna move over to the podium and the computer to be able to show you a few things. So we're, we're very excited about the progress we're making with this, this process we're in. Sue, could I ask you to just dim a few lights near the screen? So just today, I put a new dropdown menu on the, on our district website, you can see it right here, School Building Project.
Excellent.
So this is a good way for us to put information out as we get it and keep the public aware of, you know, what's going on. And so the, the first thing that I put in is this program overview. And it may be a little difficult to see it on, at home, but when you go to your own computer, I think you'll find that it's easily accessible. And this is an overview of all of the different modules that occur, and Sue, I think I need one more light on, please, because I can't read my notes. All of the modules that are part of the, the building program with MSBA. That's good, that's fine.
Awesome.
Thank you, thank you.
Can you say?
And I also would encourage everyone at home to, to view the, the website for the Massachusetts School Building Authority as well, and we'll put that website up on the, on our website as well. But I wanted to read to you a little piece from the MSBA website, talking about what their goals are for these building programs. So on the website, it says, "The MSBA recognizes the importance of educational planning on the planning, design, and construction of adaptable designs that are responsive to the needs of teaching and learning now while providing future flexibility to accommodate changes in learning environments and delivery methods during the useful life of the school." And when we were out there during the design selection process, a number of the board members, and particularly the chair, talked specifically about that, about having a building that would be innovative and would prepare us for the future and be as valuable in the future as it, as it is, as it will be currently. So the first module is called the Eligibility Period, and the eligibility period happens, for us, it happened back in March. A vote of the MSBA Board of Directors invites the district into the eligibility period, and it's based on a review of our Statement of Interest, oftentimes shortened to SOI. The vote initiates a 270-day period for the district to complete certain preliminary requirements, one of which is the formation of a school building committee, and our school building committee has been formed. The members of the committee are Mayor Karen Kager, City Financial Director Melissa Zdwardsky, Superintendent Nancy Follinsby, District Director of Business Services Dale Doran, District Director of Maintenance Peter Roy, Maple School Principal Judith Avril, School Committee Chair Deborah Luznia, Fire Chief Dave Mauder, Thomas Brown, Patrick Brof, David Boyle, John Atwater, Daniel Carey, and Maren Goldstein. And so we have been meeting, I think we've had three meetings now, to talk about various stages of this process. The district was only allowed to choose one priority, as you may remember when I've given you previous presentations, for our Statement of Interest. And so we chose Maple School because it was a school that was in greatest need. There's no gymnasium, no auditorium, no playing, no grass area for play, and not that our other schools didn't have issues as well, but we really were hoping that this would get us in, in the door, put in the door, and it did. So once the board did that, invited us in, they sent out a team to visit our school, to visit Maple School, and that's when the mayor and I, we met with the team at Maple School, and that's when we inquired about the possibility of the MSBA considering a project that would consolidate all of our elementary schools, or a project that would consolidate our grades pre-K to 8. And fortunately, they were receptive to that. I did ask them if they would come over and take a look at Center and Pepin Schools. They didn't go inside, but they did look at the surroundings, the environment, and we also took them up to Whitebrook so they could just see the, the amount of land that we had and, and the school from a distance, and I shared some information about the schools with them. So when they came back to us, telling us that we were approved for a project, or for this eligibility for a project, they approved us for three options. One, a renovation or new construction of Maple School, two, consolidation of grades pre-K to 4, and three, consolidation of grades pre-K to 8. When our prerequisites were made for the eligibility part, part of the project, when they were completed, we were allowed to procure a team of professionals, and that was the next module, Module 2, here, which is forming the project team, and that's what we've been very busy in right now. So the project team is, consists of an owner's project manager, oftentimes referred to now. So the project team consists of an owner's project manager, oftentimes referred to as OPM, and the designer selection process, which is the DSP, the Designer Panel DSP, who helps us, works with us to choose a design team for the project, or the architects for the project. In March, we chose the owner's project manager. That was a group of us who were a subcommittee of the School Building Committee, looked at the applications, chose some of the applicants to interview, and ended up choosing Colliers International for the firm to provide our owner's project manager. One of the reasons we were interested in that firm is that Mel Overmeyer, who was our owner's project manager, one of them for the high school project, was now in that company. They, Colliers International, had absorbed Strategic Building Solutions, which was Mel's original company. And along with Mel, he has a new colleague, Alan Minkus, who is our primary liaison with Colliers International. Many of you may remember Austin, who was our liaison when we built the high school project. And so Alan Minkus is the replacement for Austin. So we were allowed to pick the owner's project manager and put our choice forward to the MSBA, the board, and they approved our choice. Selection of the design team was a very different process. The MSBA Board, the selection panel, rather, has about 15 members, I believe it is, that are architects, engineers, construction people, people who work for the MSBA. And we were allowed to bring three of our representatives to join that panel. So it was, to be the mayor, she suddenly was not able to come. She had fully planned to come. And something unavoidable came up, and she was not able to attend the meeting. So Melissa, the finance director, attended in her place, myself and Dale Doran, our Director of Business Services. So the process was that we had been given proposals by the design teams, 11. We had 11 proposals from design teams across Massachusetts. And I believe there was one from Connecticut? Two?
One.
One. Couldn't see how many fingers. One from Connecticut. And so we had a big packet of information for each of them. You know, we read through all of the packets. And then we went to the board meeting, the first board meeting, which was in June. And the chair went through each packet and talked about each proposal, and what he liked, and what maybe were some questions he had. And after that, we got to ask our questions and talk about our feelings about the teams that were being considered. And at the end of that time, we each had to vote on all of those 11 teams. We gave three points to the team we thought we liked the best, two points to the team that was second, and one point to the team that was third. We did this on a sheet of paper once, and then we did it on a second sheet of paper and handed that in. And then we were asked, they're very transparent about this, all the teams were there, and we were asked to read off how we had voted, each person on the board. As it turned out, the three teams that we were most interested in ended up being the three that were selected by, had the most points, and so therefore selected by the board to come back for interviews. So the three teams came back for interviews, and we went through the similar kind of process. They each had, I think, about 40 minutes?
Twenty.
Twenty minutes, not even 40. Twenty minutes to do a presentation, which, you know, was a short amount of time to really sell their project to the board. And then we were able to ask questions. And then they left the room. And then the next team came in and did the same. And they left the room. And the third team came in. And after the end of the third team's presentation, the chair of the board said, "You can stay. The other two teams will come back." And we went through that same process of giving points to each of the teams. And the scores were very close, because all three teams were really excellent. But Kayla and Binek, the design team that we had for our high school, was the design team that came up with the greatest number of points, and therefore was approved by the panel to be our design team. And we were pleased about that, because they did an excellent job with our high school. And both Curtis Edgen and Bertrand Gardner, I believe his name is, Bert, are members of our community. They live in East Hampton, and their children either have gone to our schools or are currently in our schools. So it felt good to be able to have this team, again, be our design team. And we're very excited about that. Now, let's see what happens next. Then comes the schematic design. And so, as it says here, "The district and its team develop a robust schematic design of sufficient detail to establish the scope, budget, and schedule for the proposed project. And the MSBA generates a project scope and budget agreement that documents the project scope, budget, schedule, and MSBA financial participation." I should back up a minute, though, because the very important step in the feasibility study is that the design team now will begin to look at a number of different options. And they do have to look at the three options that were approved by the board. But they could look at other options as well. They're going to look at sites. They're going to look at, you know, pluses and minuses of current buildings. They're just going to do a very thorough study. And they have asked us to create a steering committee for this process that we're going to engage in now, the educational process, so that they're getting feedback from us and our district and the School Building Committee about what is the educational vision that we have for this new project. So it will be, let me see if I've got it here. Yeah, the members of the steering committee are going to be the mayor, superintendent, the school committee chair, the director of business services, the principal of Maple School, because, again, it's still just that Maple School project on paper, and the new director of curriculum. There'll be the steering committee, who will facilitate a process with a much larger group of focus groups that will involve community members, you know, city officials, school department people, a larger group of probably around 40 people who will be in focus groups, and, again, trying to help us develop that vision for this new building project. And the designers then will take that vision and begin to draw these designs based on, you know, what the community has, the information the community has shared with them.
So just to back up, I'm uncertain, is that input from that larger group going to be on all three possibilities, or on the one of the three that has the most support? Are they doing designs for a Maple, a pre-K through four, and a pre-K through eight?
My understanding, and Dale, I'll ask you for your thoughts about this, too. My understanding is that it's a bigger umbrella educational vision that we have for our schools in East Hampton. So what is it that we need in East Hampton for our students in the way of, you know, brick and mortar schools? Dale, I don't know if you...
And then they'll incorporate those ideas into the options that they flesh out, which has to include the three, and could be more.
So one might be green space, that we all believe that, you know, our new structure should have green space around it. That's just an example of what the envisioning process would be.
Given the relatively recent completion of the high school, it seems to me that there would be some kind of organic and logical connection between, most certainly, the third option, the pre-K through A, feeding into and complementing and preparing the students for educational experience that they're going to have there. And so it seems to me as though if you're sort of doing backward design, since we have a pretty good idea of what kind of educational experience the students are going to have now, and we spent a lot of time in the design of that building, talking about what that might be in 2020 and 2030 and 2040, that that would inform the process. Is that so? Do they go back and sort of look at the notes of those conversations and the way the high school came into being as part of this conversation?
I think anything can be looked at. And I think that, let's say, for instance, Peter, if you were on this visioning committee, that that's something that you would probably bring up and say, "This is something that I think we need to consider as we consider the educational plan for our new schools, school schools." Other questions on any of that? All right. So then, we move to the schematic design. And this is where, when we've narrowed it down to what we really believe is what we want as a community, then a very detailed design will be drafted and brought back to the MSBA for their final approval. And then funding the project is the Module Five, about how that happens. And of course, we need to bring the project to a vote in the community. And then the next, after that, is detailed design. This is design development, construction documentation, and bidding, bid procurement. And I think those of you who were here during the high school project remember that whole process. And then they continue to be the watchdogs for these projects, because they want them to turn out well. So there's construction administration and project closeout. And MSBA is with us with requirements, you know, all along the way. Now, the other thing that I've put up here is the project schedule. And this is really hard to see on the screen, I'm sure. But this is what we get from the OPM. And he updates it periodically. So you can see right here, it says, "Current status 7/26/16," you know, where we are, what we've accomplished. And if you look over here, see if I can find this, right here, where the yellow star is, this is a projected date for a vote in the community. Now, it doesn't have to be there. It could be after that. I mean, I think one of the topics for discussion is whether the vote is tied to a big election vote, or whether it's a separate vote. But that's something that the School Building Committee, you know, will be discussing when it gets closer to that. So that's November of 2017. And this is really quite an intricate diagram. The blue along the bottom, in fact, I had to go to Dale and say, "All right, Dale, do you remember what all these are?" The blue stars along the bottom are when board meetings are held in Boston. The red along the top, these are the projected School Building Committee dates. And then you can see the modules articulated here in the design. The red stars are when deliverables are due to the MSBA. And the blue star, again, you can see that looks like there's another meeting with the board scheduled for that date, tentatively. And as I say, we'll continue to put more information up on this website for everyone. So any questions on any of that?
Do you recall how long it was between the vote for the high school and the opening of the school for classes?
That was in May 2010.
Ten.
And the building opened in April of 2013.
Thirteen. We did the big April vacation switchover.
Yeah. So that gives us an idea. This is a much larger project, of course, if we do the pre-K to eight. But we'll probably get a projection for that as they get down to the choice of the schematic design. Dale, is there anything else you want to add?
I was just going to say, roughly speaking, they were talking about six to nine months after the bond vote to do the bidding process and break ground, and then 18 months to two years of construction after that.
Any other questions?
Very exciting.
Very exciting.
It is exciting. We're very excited about it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Actually, I apologize. So who makes the decision on the competing designs? Is that the School Building Committee?
I think ultimately it is, but with a lot of feedback. There'd be a lot of forums with the community, so that everybody gets to voice their opinion. And I don't know, Dale, it seems...
It will be the Building Committee that enforces a particular solution.
Right.
One of the three.
And then the MSBA has to agree that they're on board with that solution.
Yes.
Right. Right. I understand that part. I guess I was just walking it back to, at what point does the community express its preference for, I don't know, there's a minimum of three that are required, there potentially are more designs, but for now, to keep it simple, focusing on the three possible options, there will be a public education effort made and invitation, and that would be done under the authority of the School Building Committee?
Right.
Right.
Correct.
Yes, there'd be probably a number of forums, you know, because we want the community to be well-educated about the possibilities and to get as much input as possible before the School Building Committee narrows it to the one option that we put forward to the MSBA. So it'll be a process. I think it'll be an exciting process. And I think now that we have, you know, social media, there are many more opportunities for us to educate the community about the different steps along the way.
It's interesting, too, just as a side note. I was curious about that same question, because when we did the high school building project, we were one of the first projects with the newly-formed MSBA. And so their processes and ways they handle things have evolved since that time. But at that time, MSBA decided, of the choices we had, like if there was a renovate the high school or build a new high school, MSBA decided, no, we would not invest money in renovating that building. Like, they made that decision. We didn't make that decision. So it was just interesting that now, things have evolved and changed such that the School Building Committees make a recommendation, and then it's looking for the MSBA approval on it, as opposed to them deciding and telling us what they will or will not do.
And as you're creating this forum, are you going, is there a plan to survey elementary and middle school teachers as to the things that they see as the highest priority, even in terms of storage in a room? Because the needs for an elementary school section are very different from those of a middle school section. So I'm just, I mean, is there a process in place where teachers will be able to all be surveyed as to what they see as, you know, a critical part of the design of a room?
Certainly. We need to get much input as we can from teachers, from teaching staff and administrators. So we would hope that, you know, a number of them would be involved in this visioning process. And then, you know, surveys may be another way of getting even more input if we don't have, you know, all voices heard here.
I remember for the high school project, too, there were a number of meetings with staff and teachers to get input like that in terms of what they want, what's important in their classrooms, what do they want them to look like. And...
I know there were a lot of meetings where they really provided a tremendous amount of input in the process, the design process.
Yeah, I just think there's a difference in the needs of classrooms from elementary to high school. So it just feels like we should really just have a very organized checklist of priorities, you know, that the teachers are able to respond to. I realize that they came to meetings, but sometimes you don't think of those things until, oh, shoot, I wish I had thought of this particular thing. Whereas if we could all, you know, generate, what is your highest priority? What do you use in the room? What do you use for storage space? You know, I think we could make that a little easier.
One of the things that's nice is the designer, Kayla and Binek, they subcontract out the two experts in the field. One is... out the two experts in the field. One is specialized in elementary education. Well, there's two that both specialize in elementary or elementary middle. And they lead the forums, the public forums, or the focus group sessions, to draw out from people what is important to us as a community, what is important to these people as administrators, or teachers, or parents. Even students were involved in the high school meetings. And so they lead those efforts and those discussions. And they're really experts in the field, not only of education in those areas, but also buildings and building projects in, for those particular levels. So it's, I think it's exciting because we have really strong leadership and input and help to make sure we get-
That was one, certainly a plus with the Kayla and Benek team. They had two strong educational planners, as Deb says, one with elementary experience and one with secondary experience, so.
It'll be fun.
So the last item on my list of reports is the charter school resolution. And I believe I sent this to you in an email, that a number of schools and western, school districts in western Massachusetts are approving this resolution about not raising the charter cap. This is a model from Andover. And I think Ando, I know the superintendent in Arlington, and I believe that they use the same one. And a number of other districts are using the same one as well. So I thought I would share it with you tonight and let you have a discussion about it, whether you wanted to approve a resolution such as this, whether you wanted to approve this resolution, or just what your thoughts are about it.
Just one technical clarification. There are two names for the two different kinds of charter schools. This one focuses exclusively on the Commonwealth charter schools. Can you remind me, drawing a blank on the name of the-
Horace Mann.
Horace Mann. And what's the difference between the two?
You know, that I can explain that to you. Well, the Horace Mann are actually a part of a district. And as opposed to siphoning money out of a district, they, you know, they're just a, sort of like an innovative school within a district. I believe that's
Right. That's my understanding as well, is that they have a different relationship with the community, and they have a different, both-
Funding formula.
Both politically and economically have a different.
Correct. So that's why this one is about the Commonwealth.
Any comments or thoughts?
Well, I'll start with a thought that when I realized recently that, you know, another example of a family exercising the decision to leave the East Hampton School system. And regardless of the reasons, I, you know, I keep coming back to this financial piece and the difficulty of managing resources and providing great education. You know, it's no secret to anyone that my children have been educated, both in the city's public schools and in the local private school. And I know how both work. And my own view is, if you want to send your child into the private school system, that's your choice. It should be respected, and you should pay for it, as I do. And I philosophically object to the financing of Commonwealth charter schools because I believe that they are, in effect, private schools, that the public pays, everyone in the public pays for some of the public to attend. And that if you look at the average tax bill of a homeowner in this community, if they choose to send their child out of the district, they are essentially asking the city of East Hampton to pay them to live here. And I think that that's wrong. I think people should, if they want to participate in the education that's offered in those other institutions, they should be allowed to. And they should be allowed to pay to do it. They should pay what the city would pay. And if they think the city doesn't have to pay very much, then it shouldn't be very difficult for them to pay for it. I would make, obviously, a caveat to that proposal for people who are on reduced or free lunch, because they come from a different economic experience. And I don't want to deny someone the opportunity to choose a school based on their family's resources. But many, many, many of the families in the East Hampton community who choose to leave are not in the free and reduced. They're not at risk, students. They're not the intended beneficiaries of this program. And I think that it is fundamentally wrong for them to ask the city of East Hampton to pay them to live here, because they get to benefit from all of the resources. The terrific safety programs that we offer with our fire department and our police department and all of the other, the public works, all of that. There's a net outflow of money from that family's choice. And yet, the fire department will still come, the ambulance will still come, the police will still assist. And should they choose, the public schools have to take them back, no questions asked. And we would gladly do it and do a great job. But I think that, for me, one of the fundamental pieces about the way the charter school finances are designed is that in many, many, many cases, people essentially say, you're going to pay us to live here, because we're going to ask you to send money out of the community that's greater than the amount that we contribute in our property taxes. And I think that that point is not emphasized here, and I can understand why. It's not a politically appealing thing to say. I know lots of people are unhappy with me or disagree with me, and that's fine. Reasonable people can, you know, can disagree. Somebody can come in and explain. We've invited, we've had an open invitation that's gone for a number of years now to have someone come in and explain how this financial impact isn't the way we see it. No one's taken us up on the offer. I think that silence speaks for themselves, because I would happily go to any charter school in the community and talk to them about the financial situation. But that invitation hasn't been forthcoming. And I think that that's, this, you know, I would speak in support of this, just on the ground that it's another way of pointing out the deep concerns that people have about the impact of charter schools. But as I say, when I was reminded recently of, you know, people in the community choosing to leave, I think that if they choose and they can pay, they should pay to do that, rather than asking the city to pay for them to do it. So, thanks. Sorry.
So do I understand you, that you still are in favor of this, even though it doesn't have some of the pieces that you would like to see added? I mean, I look at this, I think it's excellent.
Yeah, it does. When it says it severely compromises the funding to the public schools, I agree. You know, and I repeat, as my children tell me this joke far too often, but to talk about charter schools without talking about the financial impact, as often charter school folks want to do, is sort of like asking Mrs. Lincoln, well, other than that, what'd you think of the play? I mean, you know, the money is at the core of what's happening here. So you can't say, well, let's set that aside. How'd you think the acting went? I mean, you know, come on. It's, it begins, and they make a number of other important points here. But the biggest driver, and we had a good budget year this year, but in the 10 years that I've been in this committee, we've had a lot of years when it's been brutal. And the single biggest factor is that the Commonwealth created an opportunity for people to take more money out of the community than they bring to it. And so I don't fault the individual parent for making the decision that's the best for them. They're doing something that's perfectly legal. But the people who designed the financing of this system designed it as a way of attacking public education. I would go so far as to say that many of the advocates for charter schools are, think that this is a great weapon to go after teachers, and in particular, teacher union, because they think that's the problem. I want to say, gosh, we had teachers and teacher unions in the 40s, 50s, 60s, 70s, when the schools were doing great. So I don't think that the analysis like that stands up to scrutiny. But-
I actually think that's the one thing that's missing from this, is that I think one of the things that upsets me about the ways, the way that charter schools have turned out. And, you know, like, when charters, when charter schools were kind of first proposed as an idea, there were like lots of different directions that it could go. And they were sort of justified as this, these experimental labs, where you could try out different, different styles of teaching and learning that aren't necessarily as available in a public school setting. And that's a super exciting idea that never really got realized in the way that charter schools actually happened. And I think one of the things that's the worst about it is the fact that teachers are often, and other school staff and personnel, they don't have union representation. A lot of times, they're paid a lot less than peers with similar educational training in public schools. You know, they have much less job security. And so that, I think, is like the one thing that I would really like to add to this, is kind of some, something in support of our teachers' union and our teachers within the district as well, because I think that it's important for them to know that we're thinking of them, too. I also am kind of wondering if it might be good for us to look at this a little more carefully and maybe like add some things specifically about the way that charter schools have impacted East Hampton. Because I think it would be pretty easy to approve something that another district wrote and just kind of do that. But I'd be interested to see like what, I think it's important to communicate to the public how this has uniquely impacted our district, too. Because I think our district has been kind of harder hit than this by a lot of, than a lot of other districts, mainly because of geography. We're right in the middle of a lot of charter schools. And, you know, a lot of parents, a lot of parents and students like them. So those are like my two things. But yeah, I'm definitely think, I definitely think the fact that we haven't said anything about it is something that's been noticed, and I'd like to remedy that. So I'm glad that we're bringing it up.
I think this is really good. I mean, if we're going to add something, I would want to do it fairly quickly. I think it's really important that we make a statement. You know, I mean, we're running out of time, if you look at when all this is going to come to fruition, if it does. So I think it's really important that we get something out fairly quickly and get the message going.
I don't know how you would feel, but one of the thoughts I had was because there's only four of us here tonight, whether, and there isn't a deadline for this, by any means. I agree with you, we'd want to do something soon. But I was wondering if, because of the nature of this statement, if we'd want to hold off on actually voting until we had a fuller, better attendance, full committee here. But I'm not saying I would be opposed the other way. I'm just throwing it out there for consideration.
Well, this is coming up for a vote on election day, like the, of the general election. So in November.
That's part of your invitation, right?
That's my sense of urgency, is that, you know, with vacations, I mean, who knows who can make August. Now you're into September. The vote is in November, you know.
I also think, oh, sorry.
I just think we need to really start doing things a little quicker, if we wait too long. And I don't have a problem with adding stuff, but this is really, the bones here are really good. And they're really, I know, just from the last meeting at the collaborative, they're the same concerns that everybody has about charter schools. And more and more cities and towns are creating these resolutions. I just think it's really important that we do it pretty quickly. I would hate to see us get to September and we're still talking about it and rewriting it when-
Well, is there a way we could like minute it? Like, I don't think, I think we should wait for more people from the committee to be here, to vote in it one way or the other, just because I think that that's, that's more fair. But when we do, like, is there a way to add to that, to that motion, I guess, you know, kind of some other specific concerns that we have? So we wouldn't have to like put it, we wouldn't have to like meet and figure out exactly what the language is, but we could like, you know.
Well, as a point of clarification, I'm not expecting the committee to endorse the more radical element of what I said before. I mean, if I were a dictator and could wave a wand, I would amend this, as I said, financially, and say to folks, okay, you know, we'll cover, we'll cover you up to your property taxes. Everything else is on you. But I do think that there's merit to having a formal resolution from the committee. I think many people on the committee, for a long time, have talked about this. I mean, Tom Brown, and I apologize, Tom, if I'm getting this wrong, but his sentiment was very clear. If I remember correctly, the school committee in East Hampton was one of a handful, or maybe even fewer, maybe just a couple of fingers, maybe one or two, that voted against the adoption of the school choice program. And that was forced by the mighty power of Beacon Hill to have to say, uncle, and say, of course, we'll, you know, our students can participate in this, and we'll bear the cost of it. So I think the idea of the committee as a whole endorsing a position has merit. I know that I won't be here in August, but you know that you can count. I've spoken in public forums already this year on this issue, and will continue to speak on it. So even if I can't be here in August to formally endorse it, I would be happy to then add my endorsement in September after the fact to make it more unanimous, if that helps. I think we could, we could do the same thing. We could do something tonight and then extend the opportunity to the members of the committee who couldn't be here to add their voice to the core of this, and then we can amend it later. You know, the one downside to 90-degree days in July is, I don't know who's paying attention.
I was thinking about that, too. I was thinking if we did it at the beginning of the school year, when everybody's paying attention because they're interested in something else.
And that would probably be, and that's what I was thinking, maybe the best thing to do is to try to really wrap this up at the very first meeting in September.
Yeah. No, I agree it shouldn't go on, but on that. Like, I think it needs, it needs to be kind of the first thing that we do in the school year. Like, it needs to be one of the first things we do. Yeah. No, I think that, I think that's a, that's a good idea. And I also understand your concern about things taking longer than they need to, because that's definitely something that happens as well. So-
So would the suggestion be that any wordsmithing of this document be submitted for a reading in August, so that it could then be voted in-
Yeah, that makes sense.
September? Does that make sense?
So when would the wordsmithing take place?
It could be discussed at the August meeting. That if anyone had any suggestions about points of emphasis or addition, that they would be submitted, and I guess to Superintendent to you and copy to Sue, so they can be included in the discussion in August. And then, coming out of that, we could agree that this is what we're going to consider and vote on in September. Does that-
Is this the type of thing where I'm, I'm new at this? In terms of like this being a resolution, do we have to approve like each of these lines, or do we just approve the whole document?
I think just approve the whole document.
Okay.
Read the whole thing?
Correct.
I mean, they've done a great job. Almost everything-
No, they've done, it's really good. It all fits on one page.
Every element that came out of the discussion that occurred earlier this spring, at the meeting over at Eastworks, is here. You know, there's extraordinary history to it as well.
And there might be power in approving the same resolution. I don't know. But power in approving the same resolution that all of the other districts-
Oh, they're all approving the same one. Oh, I thought they were all like writing their own. Oh, okay.
But in the end, Nancy, isn't it, I apologize, but isn't it, in the end, we're taking a position on the ballot issue? And you can have five different good arguments for why you're going to vote one way. And if we happen to say that we resolve and urge the members of the East Hampton community to vote against lifting the cap, even if our reasons are slightly different, if the folks in Andover are responding to this, and in Arlington are responding to this, I mean, I think it's-
No, I agree with you, Peter. I'm just saying that, you know, I think I've heard you say that it would be easy to just approve this, and so it was just another thought along those lines, that it's similar. It's the same, I believe, as other districts are approving. But either way, I think it's a strong statement.
Right. Because it covers all of the points that all of the districts have been talking about for so long. I mean, it really, I'm looking through accountability. I'm looking at, you know, service to special need students, the unfair financing. I mean, it really covers everything. It's really nicely done.
I guess personally, I would be in favor of going forward with what's here, then trying to get into rewriting it. I think we'll, that's my, my opinion.
Maybe the idea is in September, the very first meeting, do it then, when there are more people back. You know, there is a lot of vacation-taking.
I just thought it would be nice if it, if we could get a unanimous, full committee's vote on this. I think that would be a nice thing to do.
Is there a way that we can like get a, like, get a vote on it tonight and then bring it up again in September, so that like it's on the agenda again and people see it again? Or should we just wait, wait for September at that point? Because I think, I think one thing that we would lose by doing it now is the attention from the people watching, many of whom are also on vacation, and maybe like aren't thinking about the intricacies of the school department during the summer break.
They say that the election season really starts at Labor Day. You know, people are paying attention because there are the presidential conventions going on, and that's, that's getting some attention. But boy, I think people kind of shift away from it pretty quickly, once the, you know, once the speeches are over.
Well, and I'm thinking, too, especially for local politics, or like local, local issues, I mean, this isn't necessarily a local issue, but it is something that's not the president. So, getting, getting people kind of interested in it kind of might sway whether or not they actually, you know, think about it when they're voting, you know.
Do you need clarification from the committee? Does it need to go on the agenda for August and September, or only September?
Maybe just September.
I think, because we don't need to read it, right?
What, does our first meeting in September is what date?
Oh, uh...
Have it right in our packet.
It's here. The next meeting is August 9th. September 13th.
September 13th.
Yes, sorry, September 13th.
So, are we comfortable with that timing?
You know, I would say, sorry, old Sue, I don't think there's any harm at all in reading it tonight, reading it in August, and voting on it in September. Because if people pick it up, you know, one of those three times, then I think that's great.
That's all we need.
But the vote will be on September 13th. I think that's a great idea.
On the agenda for reading in August, and then hold in September.
Thank you.
Yes.
Okay. And then maybe for the benefit of those who are watching this at this time, we could read this aloud, so they know what we're talking about.
Yes.
And they can find it online with our minutes, right? It'll be added to the minutes. Cool.
And so, then our plan going forward will be that we're heading in the direction of approving this as-is, and not attempting to create a different version.
Yeah, I think that makes sense.
Okay. Great. So, does anyone want to read this? Do you want me to read it?
You want to read parts, and then we can, I just think it might be good to do a round rather than reading.
Yeah.
Okay.
Sure.
Get all of us...
So, this is a resolution against lifting the cap on Commonwealth charter schools. Sarah, do you want to start off?
Yeah, sure. And this is an example from, that was written by Andover, which a lot of other districts have adopted. Whereas free public schools available to all students regardless of income, ability, need, or English language proficiency are foundational to our democracy, and, I'll keep going.
Whereas public education was meant to be the melting pot of our diversity, a place where students from varied socio-economic backgrounds, ethnicities, and lived experiences could come together and help build a stronger nation and a meaningful democracy, and...
Whereas all of our students deserve high-quality public schools that teach the whole child, providing enrichment and addressing social and emotional needs in addition to core academic subjects, and...
Whereas local accountability for our public schools is necessary to ensure that students are, that schools are responsive to the needs of their communities, and...
Whereas Massachusetts charter school finance is biased heavily in favor of charter schools and severely compromises funding to public schools, resulting in loss of funds that is undermining to the ability of districts to provide all students with the educational services to which they are entitled, and...
Whereas Commonwealth charter schools are often approved over the objections of a majority of the community residents and their elected officials, and are not accountable to a local elected officials once they're approved, and...
Whereas Commonwealth charter schools often fail to serve the same proportion of special need students, low-income students, and English language learners as the districts from which they receive students, and often use high suspension rates and other counseling methods to drive out students they don't want to serve, and...
Whereas Commonwealth charter schools claim that they help close the achievement gap. They are instead accentuating that gap by selectively serving students, serving students who are generally performing well, and are thus creating separate and unequal opportunities for success, and...
Whereas our focus as a state should be on creating excellent public schools for all students and striving to achieve their primary mission of public education, educating all young people to be effective citizens in a democracy, and...
Whereas lifting the cap on charter schools would greatly worsen the problems listed above and lead to a more costly and divisive two-track school system.
Therefore, may it be resolved that the East Hampton School Committee opposes lifting the cap on the Commonwealth charter schools.
For the record. Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Oh, gosh, now this stuff, right?
Now, we need to approve our minutes from the June 28th meeting.
Yes, motion to approve the minutes dated 28th June 2016.
Second?
I just noticed before we vote that there's a stray word listed under those present on that copy.
Nancy Falensky student.
After Nancy Falensky, there's just, the word's student.
Nancy Falensky student.
Write the word.
There's a motion, it's been seconded, with that minor change noted. All those in favor? Motion passes.
Okay.
Warrants and payroll.
Got it. Hang on one second. Okay, so, oh, wait. Here we go. Motion. Oh, wait, I read the... Don't I read, I thought that used to be pink sheets.
There is.
Oh, there it is, I found it. I move to approve the school payroll dated 21 July 2016 in the amount of $295,029.37.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, there's a motion to approve school payroll dated July 21st 2016 in the amount of $295,029.37. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes.
Move to approve the accounts payable authorization for payment dated 21 July 2016 in the amount of $4,550.07.
Second.
There's a motion, and it's been seconded, to approve the accounts payable authorization for payment dated July 21st 2016 in the amount of $4,550.07. All those in favor? Motion passes.
Okay. We're doing, sorry, I'm doing these in reverse order, I apologize, Sue. I move to approve the school payroll dated 7 July 2016 in the amount of $300,575.64.
Second.
There's a motion, it's been seconded, to approve the school payroll dated July 7th 2016 in the amount of $300,575.64. All those in favor? Motion passes.
And finally, I move to approve the accounts payable authorization for payment dated 30 June 2016 in the amount of $338,421.63.
Second.
There's a motion, it's been seconded, to approve the accounts payable authorization for payment dated June 30th 2016 in the amount of $338,421.63. All those in favor? Motion passes. Thank you very much.
And I think then we'll just need signatures on these, the remaining documents, and so... Oh, right, and then we have requests for school choice openings, sorry?
Correct.
Where's it?
The first is...
Motion to approve the request from Principal Meredith Belice that one school's choice slot be opened for 5th grade during the 2016-2017 school year.
Second. Approved.
Motion to approve the school choice slot to be open for the 5th grade during the 2016-17 school year, it's been seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Amen.
Motion passes.
And then, a motion to approve the request to open a 12th grade choice seat for a student who was an East Hampton resident and was currently enrolled to attend, but will be moving out of the district this summer and wants to stay in the East Hampton School system. And this is from Kevin Burke, the principal of East Hampton High School.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion to approve the 12th grade choice seat for a student currently, that was currently enrolled at East Hampton High School by Principal Kevin Burke. It's been seconded. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Motion passes. Thank you very much.
Yes, and I would make a motion for us to adjourn.
No.
No, I didn't. Right, correct. Moving into a work session.
Okay. So, we'll be moving into our work session in the conference room.
Right. And if you and, oh, sorry...
Do we need to vote on that? Oh, is there a second? All those in favor? Motion passes.